Yeah.
Hey, Ma. Sorry, I'm here. Thank you for coming. I saw you right up and put myself right away. We need to get her here. Celebrate with you and kind of discuss some of your work. Your efforts in that place. Glad to have you. You want to first? Sorry.
Ironically, yes.
They always change these seats. All right. We good? Good evening. Tonight, we have three separate meetings. They're all short. The first one is called Public Housing Authority. Then we will move to the regular meeting, of which many of you are here for that. Then we have a study session after that to discuss items that we will be voting on on Thursday evening. So with that, commissioners, I would like to call to order our Public Housing Authority Commission regular meeting. Clerk, would you please take the role?
Chairman Hartke.
Here.
Vice Chair Ellis.
Here.
Commissioner Loring.
Here.
Commissioner Encinas.
Here.
Commissioner Poston.
Here.
Commissioner Orlando.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Do we have any unscheduled public appearances tonight?
No, Chairman Hartke, we do not.
Okay. Commissioners, next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion or a desire to have a presentation on any of these? Motion?
Motion. I would like to make a motion. Chair?
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items one and two.
Okay, we have a motion, commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, I heard. I heard Vice Commissioner Ellis first. I've got to get these titles straight. Clerk, please take the vote.
Vice Chair Ellis.
Just got a vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Loring.
Yes.
Commissioner Encinas.
Yes.
Commissioner Poston.
Yes.
Commissioner Orlando.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Yes.
And Chairman Hartke.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great. Commissioners, that concludes our meeting of the Public Housing Authority Commissioned. Thank you for joining us, PHEC member. And with that, we'll gavel out. I've been accused of liking to gavel, but these are separate meetings as they show up on TV, so we try to give them an opening and a closing. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of August 11th, 2025 City Council. Clerk, please take the role.
Mayor Hartke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
Here.
Councilmember Encinas.
Here.
Councilmember Poston.
Here.
Councilmember Orlando.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
And Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. Our invocation tonight will be brought forth by Pastor Preston Dobbins from Bethel Sunrise and followed by our Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Poston. Pastor.
Thank you all. Good evening. Before I open up in a word of prayer, I was just thinking about you all, praying for you and thinking about what to pray about for you. And I was going to just pray what I typically pray for leaders, which is wisdom. But then I felt compelled to share a lesson that I feel the Lord has kind of shown me these last couple of months as I'm new to the pastor. I'm two years in, so feel like a rookie in a lot of ways and realize that a lot of my prayers were focused on wisdom, wisdom, wisdom. God make me a good leader, good leader, good leader. And I felt the Lord tell me just recently, there's something more important than wisdom, and it's love. And that the most important motivator for a leader is to have a heart of love. And so wisdom is great, but wisdom from a heart of love. And so just a reminder that I know you guys know you're selfless and you're serving, but a reminder to lead with love like you do. And so, Father, I just thank you for this night. I thank you for this council. I thank you that the wisdom is already there. And I just ask that, as it says in 1 Corinthians 14, you tell us to pursue love, to earnestly desire the gifts, earnestly desire wisdom and success and all the things, but to pursue love. And I just ask, Holy Spirit, that there would be a heart pursuit of love and that the love for people would be just the motivating factor in all of these wonderful men and women in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen. Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, for those excellent words. Thank you, Councilmember, for leading us in the pledge. Next on our agenda tonight is scheduled public appearances, and I'd like to invite Vice Mayor Ellis to join me out front. So first on our scheduled public appearances are service recognitions. I'd like to call on our acting city manager, John Pombieri, to lead us.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. We have two service recognitions for staff tonight. If Leah Powell from Neighborhood Resources would please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to call up Jamie Richens. Jamie has been with the city for 10 years of service, so I'd like to congratulate her in completing her 10 years. She began her career as a code enforcement officer in 2015 and then as the lead inspector, and then she's been promoted into her current role of code enforcement supervisor. Over the past decade, she has consistently demonstrated knowledge and sincere commitment to our community. Jamie is a true asset to the organization. She brings a calm, thoughtful approach to every situation, especially when dealing with the public, and has truly earned the public trust. Beyond her exceptional work ethic, Jamie brings a unique warmth and personality to the team. She's often the one organizing different special events for our staff or supporting the staff at different special events. And she has a well-known love for animals and her compassion. And I have to share that Jamie, through our programs, when we also encounter people experiencing homelessness that may have animals experiencing homelessness that need homes, Jamie has rescued guinea pigs, chickens, turtles, and the infamous goat that was in the parking garage that was experiencing homelessness. So thank you, Jamie, for that extra touch. And I have to add that Jamie does a great rooster call, and she is the one that can find the feral roosters in Chandler, too. So thank you also for that special gift, Jamie. But we want to thank you for 10 years of service, unwavering dedication, and the heart you bring to everything that you do, and we are so lucky to have you as part of our team.
Okay, before we take a photo, we need to hear the call.
Okay. You can't look, though. Ready?
Code is going to be calling on a code inspector.
Mayor, next, if we could have Development Services Director Kevin Snyder please come down. And Mayor, I would tell you that this next one is a Hall of Fame Service Recognition Award. Wait till you hear this one.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of City Council, if you have Ophelia Sesma, please come up. So Mayor and Council, it's 1985. Mikhail Gorbachev is elected the leader of the Soviet Union. The first Nintendo game console comes out. Microsoft Windows 1.0 is released. This one really hurts. I'm not sure if I can say this out loud as a diehard Celtics fan, but the LA Lakers beat the Boston Celtics. Let's move on. Out of Africa wins Best Picture of the Year for the Oscars. We Are the World is the Record of the Year. And most importantly, Ophelia joins Team Chandler. So Ophelia joined Team Chandler in August of 1985. Yes, 40 years ago. Throughout the next 40 years of her relationship that is still going on, she's still with us, she worked in various parts of the city. She worked in planning, neighborhood services, site development, and public works. She's been part of the Development Services Team since 2014. And during her career, she's provided administrative support, supported boards and commissions, processed permits, prepared financial documents, and assisted with public records requests. She's kind of done it all. As stated by her current supervisor, Ophelia's career has been more than just providing exceptional customer service and support, which she does. It's been about connection. He goes on to highlight that Ophelia has demonstrated to us that at the core of every successful city, there are public servants who care deeply about the people they serve. And while the portable CD player may have come and gone, Ophelia has been caring deeply about the Chandler community for the last 40 years. It's an incredible accomplishment, a testament to your belief in public service. And on behalf of the Development Services Department in the city, I want to extend heartfelt congratulations and thank you for 40 years of service to this Chandler community. Thank you. And, yep. So I think members of her family are with us.
All right. All right. Next, we have a proclamation, drowning impact awareness month. I could have members from our community service, police department, and fire development, our fire department staff come join us. We have a proclamation. Whereas water safety education and drowning prevention are at the heart of the What Are You Doing? campaign, a citywide initiative dedicated to keeping community members safe in and around water. And whereas drowning prevention begins with the ABCDs of water safety, adult supervision whenever children are near water, barriers such as pool fences and locked doors are in place, classes including swim lessons and CPR training that teach lifesaving skills, and D devices such as Coast Guard-approved life jackets for non-swimmers. And whereas drowning hazards exist in as little as two inches of water, including household buckets, bathtubs, and toilets, as well as rivers, lakes, and backyard swimming pools. And whereas the risk of drowning extends beyond the summer months, especially during the biddy-bizzy back-to-school months, reminding us that water safety requires year-round attention and awareness. Whereas recognizing the devastating impact of drowning on families and the community reinforces the urgent need for continued education, prevention efforts, and access to water safety resources. Now, therefore, I, Kevin Hartke, Mayor of the City of Chandler, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of August 2025 as drowning impact awareness month. And I encourage all Chandler residents to commit to water safety best practices, connect and support one another, and be vigilant around bodies of water all year long. Please.
Okay. So as Mayor stated, the ABCDs of water safety. A for adult supervision. We want to see eye-to-eye supervision. Having an adult around the pool is not good enough. You have to keep your eyes on the children and adults in the water at all times. We've unfortunately in the valley have lost 31 individuals this year. Here in the city, we've had some tragedies ourselves. It takes a community, and we just are urging everybody that's out there because this time of year it's extremely warm. Individuals like to get in the pool and other water sources, and we just need a collective effort to keep our eyes on our loved ones. So thank you.
Thank you. Let's do a photo. Council, this might be a good one for you guys to get behind if you choose. Why don't you come stand behind the dais? All right. I'm excited about our next recognition. I read about this in a news release, and I called Alexis and said, we've got to see if she's able to come. So this evening, we're going to be recognizing Amani Galera Young, the 24-25 Gatorade Arizona Girls Track and Field Player of the Year. So, Amani, and if your family wants to join you, come on up. Come stand next to your daughter here. Tonight, we have the opportunity to acknowledge an outstanding Chandler athlete. Amani Galera Young, a Chandler High student, was named a 2024-2025 Gatorade Arizona Girls Track and Field Player of the Year. The Gatorade Player of the Year is the top honor in high school sports, celebrating the nation's best high school athletes for their success on the field, in the classrooms, and in the community. Amani has won the AIA State Championship in the 300 meters hurdle this past season to lead the Chandler Wolves in their overall team title. She's also won a pair of individual state crowns at the Division One State Meet in the 100 and 300 hurdles. Exceling on and off the field, Amani is a member of the National Honor Society and serves in Black Student Union and United Sisters Youth Group. She's maintained an impressive 4.3 GPA and has started her senior year this year. We are proud to have students like you representing our Chandler community. Congratulations on this exciting and impressive achievement, and would love to hear anything you would like to say.
I'm just really thankful that God has gotten me here and blessed me with the talents that I have, and I'm really thankful for my family in supporting me and my coaching staff, also the coaches that are not here, but I'm really thankful for everything that I've been given in life, and yeah.
Thank you so much. All right. Can we move you guys here? Mama, you want to say anything? Okay. All right. All right, we have one more recognition. Google Fiber and IDIA partnership. So if we could have G Fiber and IDEA team come up and join us. Tonight, we have an opportunity to recognize some community partners, and I'd like to turn it over to you guys for the presentation, then we'll do a photo. So is this, Erin, you're leading or who?
Hi, guys. I'm Will with Google Fiber. Just really excited to highlight IDIA, the Institute for Digital Inclusion Acceleration. As you all know, Google Fiber has been serving Chandler customers since Veterans Day of last year, and we're rapidly building out the whole city, so you can check out fiber.google.com if we're not quite to your house yet with fast internet. But a big passion of ours is digital equity, STEM skills, getting people ready for the 21st century, and that's what these guys do. And they have one of their mobile hives parked outside. So we invite everyone after the meeting, if you want to come out and learn more about what IDIA is doing in Chandler and across the valley. And Dr. Erin Carr-Jordan can tell you a little bit more about it.
Thank you so much. It's so nice to be here. Thank you for welcoming us. We're excited to be partnering with Google Fiber. We're really excited to be here in Chandler. We have a hive that's located just down the street at San Marcos Elementary School. Our mobile hive really lets us get to folks who can't make it to a hive. Everything that we do is always free, and we bring 21st century skills from education, workforce development, access to healthcare, access to community building wherever we go. So we look forward to seeing all of you outside if you're able to come, and we look forward to making sure that we can get wherever Chandler needs us to be. Thanks so much.
Very good. Come on up for a photo. And Erin, just in case... And Aaron, just in case people are not savvy with the, all the acronyms, tell us, everyone else, what IDEA means.
Sure. It stands for the Institute for Digital Inclusion Acceleration.
And who's your favorite Flynn Brown graduate?
You, sir.
All right, so we encourage everyone, if you leave before our next set of meetings or afterwards, please go visit the hive afterwards. That concludes our upfront presentations. Counsel, we've got a couple items on the consent agenda for our regular meeting before we go into our study session. A motion would be appropriate.
Mayor.
Councilmember Orlando.
I move to approve the consent agenda for August eleventh, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting, items one through two.
We've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Encinas. Any recusals, any other actions? Seeing none, counsel, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great. Counsel, that concludes our regular meeting. Welcome to the study session of August eleventh. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Clerk, please take the role.
Mayor Hartkey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
Here.
Councilmember Encinas.
Here.
Councilmember Poston.
Here.
Councilmember Orlando.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
We have a call.
Great. Counsel, just for information, staff informed us right before this or before our study session that, or our work session, that item number five has been pushed back to the September round. So that will not be, we won't be voting on that on Thursday night. It was not called as part of our meetings here tonight, but I did want you to know that. The first item called in by counsel, councilmember Poston is requesting a presentation on item number one, the Airport Ground Lease Agreement with Chandler Air Services. Ryan Reeves.
Mayor, counsel, thank you. Good evening. My presentation up here, bear with me one sec. It's my pleasure to bring to you tonight for your consideration Amendment One to Airport Lease Number Zero One Eight with Chandler Air Service. This lease will result in a single fourteen thousand four hundred square foot hangar with adjoining three thousand square feet of office on the hashed area of the airfield just north of the terminal you see pictured in the map before you. The details of the lease are as an initial twenty-year term with two ten-year options to extend. For our purposes tonight, there are three items of note included in the lease, the first two of which are performance measures. That first performance measure required that within the first anniversary of the lease's execution, the tenant was to pull permits to begin construction. The second performance measure was that the tenant would complete the certificate of occupancy attainment by the second anniversary. The third item of note is that the lease did provide for a day-for-day credit for any delays experienced during the development and construction process not caused directly by the tenant themselves. The timeline that brings us here this evening is that, given that day-for-day credit and delays in obtaining FAA environmental clearances for the project to develop, the notice of default for failure to pull permits was issued in June of twenty twenty-four due to that delay. From July through December of twenty twenty-four, the tenant worked in good faith and diligently for, to move this process forward to get closer to construction start. We worked in concert with them on those efforts. However, as many of you will recall, in January, we were notified that their funding partner had pulled out of the arrangement. They had lost the funding and had to begin again on that section. We notified counsel at that time of our intention to terminate the lease, and that is in fact what we proceeded to do in mid-February, the following month. In mid-February, we issued a letter of termination of the lease, which allowed them thirty days to vacate the site as they were using it heretofore. However, very shortly thereafter, they approached us with a funding partner. There was a good deal of veracity in the partnership. We gave them, staff provided to them, terms and conditions to consider a lease amendment to cure the default state. And they asked at that point to delay or stay the termination, which staff agreed to. By May of twenty twenty-five, they obtained all of their construction permits. And as of the end of last month, they had obtained all of the bonds and all of the other metrics required for us to consider a lease amendment. So why an amendment? These five points, we believe are key. The design process is completed and they have approved plans in hand. They also have obtained, as I said, their construction permits. The performance and payment bonds are in place for the guarantee of the completion of the project. The construction manager has already been selected and is under contract with the tenant, and the financial partner, namely Core Bank, is committed. What this amendment will do is extend the deadline for the project for completion until August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. That's to obtain certificate of occupancy by eight thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. No other performance measures are required by this amendment. And with that, very high level, quick overview, I'm glad to take any questions you may have.
Councilmember Poston.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for that presentation, Ryan. You know, we talked earlier a little bit about this, but it's always a concern when a project doesn't go through and it keeps getting extended and extended. And we obviously want to be sensitive to our Chandler businesses, and Chandler Air Service has been a business in Chandler for a very long time. But maybe you could also answer the question of why we didn't just go back out to RFP on this one?
Through the mayor, councilmember Poston, glad to. Given the timelines, to say nothing of the money expended in planning, developing, and contracting that the tenants already expended, if we were to go back out and re-RFP, put a new request proposal out for this project, it would add in our estimation, year or more to the project. We believe this to be the most direct and equitable path to hangar development and development on the airport proper.
Okay, and then we'll look, we're, we're going to get the exact same project that we approved some time ago. And it's just been a little delayed, like quite a few of our businesses are having that, that issue. That being said, what's your confidence level in this being completed?
Through the mayor, councilmember Poston, staff and I are confident in the guarantees that have been put in place, that this project is set up for success as best it can be.
Okay, okay. And then how close is it to getting moving? Tell, tell us where it is today.
Should counsel approve this amendment, I believe steel is to be delivered the eighteenth of this month, of September, I'm sorry. So steel is going to be delivered next month. And we are essentially waiting for this amendment to be approved if it's, if it is. That then cures the default lease state, and they can proceed with construction.
So basically, we're ready to build.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And I also want to thank you for the performance measures that you've placed on this and your expertise in this. If you say that this is getting ready to go, I trust that, I know you've looked at it thoroughly. So thank you very much for this presentation. And thank you to the applicant as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor.
Additional questions? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Kevin, thank you so much. And to the applicants, I really would like to thank you for sticking to it. I know it was hard. You decided that you, you wanted to invest in Chandler no matter what. You went out and worked so hard to get a builder and, to get the money and come back and was able to allow us to help you navigate to that. The testament is the fact that when mayor and council tell a director to get to a yes, we always do our best to get to that yes. So I appreciate that. And we'd love to continue to see what else you're going to be bringing into Chandler because this is just the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Additional questions, comments? All right, thank you. Next item is item number six, agreement with the pigeon guy. Presentation, all right, is the pigeon guy here?
I was tempted to wear a bird suit.
All right. I thought really that was the reason why councilmember Encinas asked him, is he just wanted to see what the guy with that moniker would look like.
I could wear a cardinal suit, I guess.
Yeah, that would work. Go ahead, Michael, presentation.
Thank you, sir. Mayor and counsel, thank you for having me today. Today, I'm going to give up just a briefing on our agenda item before you today for pigeon abatement services or bird abatement services. It is a comprehensive proposal. Staff is requesting approval for contracted services to implement a comprehensive bird abatement program addressing significant and persistent pigeon activity at multiple city facilities. Of those facilities, they include the main library, covered parking, main police department parking garage, city hall, city hall parking garage, city hall cooling towers, courts, police department covered parking, center for the arts, tumbleweed tennis center, as well as tumbleweed rec center, and Oregon Street parking structure. So we have numerous facilities there, and this is not a, a complete list. Staff has been working with subject matter experts for over a year to develop a comprehensive plan to mitigate pigeon activity. The city has experienced ongoing bird-related issues, particularly pigeons, at the above facilities for several years. Past abatement methods, primarily trapping, trapping and installation of spikes have yielded limited and temporary results. Persistent bird presence has resulted in property damage, to include corrosion, clogged drains, damage to building services, health and safety concerns, droppings, nesting debris, and airborne contaminants, increased maintenance costs, frequent window cleaning, pressure washing, street sweeping, and cooling tower servicing. These impacts are especially pronounced in parking structures and covered areas where bird activity is concentrated. The city continues to receive frequent complaints from facility users. The new contracted services represent holistic, multifaceted approach to abatement, including cleaning and sanitizing of all impacted areas, targeted abatement measures at nesting, purging sites using humane, industry-standard methods to reduce population and deter return, regular monitoring and assessment through visual inspections, acoustic monitoring and damage evaluations, as well as data collection, analysis, before and after implementation to measure program effectiveness and guide future maintenance strategies. Our expected outcomes are significant reduction in pigeon population and activity at target locations, mitigated mitigation of facility damage associated repair maintenance costs, improved cleanliness, safety, usability for employees, residents, and visitors, and creation of sustainable abatement monitoring program for ongoing control. With that, I would gladly take any questions.
Councilmember Encinas.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Mikey, thanks for giving that briefing to me. I just kind of wanted to know how we got to this, to this point of reaching this RFP, because honestly, I was a little shell shocked at the price tag that was associated with it for the abatement of pigeons. And can you tell me exactly how many number of buildings or facilities this is going to be for?
This involves at least eleven or twelve buildings, I believe. Counts ten buildings on my list, but there's probably a couple additional I didn't list on here.
Okay. And then, how much would you say, I don't know if you have this number on you by chance, but over this timeframe, how much has the city spent internally here on pigeon abatement?
Through the mayor, councilmember Encinas. I don't have that number offhand. It's been, this is an ongoing, not just a couple of years, it's been in some cases since the origination of the, of the structure itself. So for example, Oregon Street Parking Structure, that pigeon issue has been an issue since day one, as well as some of the other parking, covered parking facilities associated with our solar program. So going forward, I, I would say that we are putting in specifications in our, in our construction specs to include pigeon abatement controls in those specifications going forward.
Okay, and these abatement measures that we're going to be putting in potentially, are they going to be permanent? Like, you know how you said the spikes and stuff, is there going to be other permanent structures that are going to be lasting long? And is this contract just going to be for a one-time, just to get those things upgraded? Or is this going to be a continual year after year type of contract?
Through the mayor, councilmember Encinas, these are permanent structures that we've placed at each site and facility.
Okay.
As far as maintenance goes, very minimal. We're talking, the most effective, probably method that we're looking at is netting. Once you put it up, really, there's no maintenance on it. It's just making sure that stays intact. If it gets any, any tears through other, maybe associated work within the facility, we just make sure it's repaired. I personally worked with netting in the past. That's pretty effective. It's expensive, but it's effective. And there's some other methods that we use too, just depending on the means and methods in which the contractor deems necessary.
Okay, so we're going to put in permanent structures, and this is going to include maintenance, cleanup?
Yes, sir.
And this is for a certain period of time, or?
As far as project implementation, or as far as how long they will last?
Not how long they'll last, like, once the structures are in, I guess how you said, like, there's going to be netting and maintenance and cleaning after that.
Correct.
Okay. Is that going to be for a certain timeframe for this?
For the duration, for the life of the building. We'll, we'll maintain it for the life of the building. I mean, we're, we're counting on these measures to have a, have a direct measurable impact on, on the bird population and the, the droppings, the nuisance of, of those, of the birds.
Okay, thank you. That answers all my questions.
Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, councilmember Encinas brought up a good one, but I'm going to just toss this over to the city manager and obviously, what we're doing right now is we're just treating what the issue is. This is going to create an ongoing expense to understand the installation and what the cost is. When I was reading the contract, it only allowed, it only says seven locations in this contract that I'm reading before. So if there's something that needs to be adjusted, then probably want to see what those other buildings are, because right now I see seven. But I guess my thing is that we've had people come to, and it's not your problem, I'm just addressing it, just, just take the elephant out the room. We've had problems with constituents and residents feeding wild animals. Here we are about to put a huge investment into protecting our buildings because of wild animals. And I'm just sitting there thinking, is there going to be eventually an appetite from us as a council to make a decision on how we address feeding wild animals? Because if we don't address that, that's going to, this is going to continue to be a burden. We have another neighbor that was dealing with it. I've called the city a couple of different times where there were, we had to put spikes on top of lamp pulses and things like that. And then they had to come out and clean the sidewalk and scrub it. And this right here, although I appreciate what the initial cost is going to be, I, I am thinking about the ongoing cost of what this is going to be forever. So I just kind of think that right now, we really need to consider maybe passing some type of ordinance that addresses this issue, city manager, or maybe we can look at this a little bit further, because right now, I just feel like we're just only simply putting up a barrier to counteract, but we're not addressing the feeding of wild animals, birds, and other different things that is coming on. So I just think that this program will be, it's going to be great for what it does for a starting point. But man, we don't even, we put thirty thousand dollars into feral cats and protecting that. Now we're about to put three hundred and some thousand dollars in protective measures for pigeons. And we haven't yet addressed the real issues this. Now, Michael, that's not your, that's not your problem. It's our conversation type of thing. But I'm just, I'm just putting it out there so that way, city manager, we really need to look at this in a more meaningful way. We cannot just put money on issues and then walk away from it. We really need to address it from a meaningful perspective. And counsel can make meaningful decisions such as creating ordinances that can help reduce that population and making sure that all animals, wild animals, are treated the same, at the same level or respect, to bring it down since we are moving more into urban areas. So city manager, I just kind of want to throw that over there to you as something to, what do you think, city manager?
Mayor, councilmember Harris, we are a little bit ahead of the game in the city for our buildings, but we are currently working through one of your subcommittees to address this issue in the community. And we're not bringing that forward right now because we want to be thoughtful and intentional in what we do, and make sure whatever we do is enforceable and addresses the problem that you bring forward. Staff is very aware of it. They are working on it quite diligently, and we hope at some point to be able to bring something forward that gives you some comfort that we're doing it in the community as well as for our own buildings.
Okay, I just, thank you for that, city manager. I just want us to make sure we put thirty thousand, again, into feral cats and doing all that stuff. We're going to put three hundred and some thousand dollars into protection of pigeons and pigeon poop and things like that. So I just want you to understand what the correlation I'm trying to draw. It just doesn't make sense, but let us make it make sense. If we're going to address these type of wild animals, let's make it make sense across the board. Is that cool?
Message is understood.
All right, thank you.
If, if, if I may, just for clarity, we're, we're protecting our buildings and infrastructure. We're not, we're not protecting pigeons, just for clarity.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I think tonight's headlines might be I think tonight's headlines might be, council runs afoul of pigeon abatement. I'm willing to do the work. Okay. Next, on our agenda, being called in, item number 20, monopole tower services. John Kunitz and Matt, councilmember Orlando was fine with this. See what that? John? Did you have a question, or did you want a presentation? Great.
Real quick, I hope.
You spent five minutes talking about pigeons.
Don't pigeonhole me.
I think he was 10 minutes on the pigeon tower.
10 minutes?
Yeah.
All right.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, utilities gets to bring two issues for you tonight, both very positive things that we're doing. The first is item 20, which is a council memo that is asking for the purchase and installation of seven monopoles for our advanced metering infrastructure. So what's a monopole? Monopole pictured here with that yellow arrow to it. It's about a 40-foot-tall single pole, looks like a flagpole. On top of that is a small antenna. We have seven additional that we need to purchase that are about, are six that are about 40 feet tall, one that'll be 60-foot tall. And these are going to be placed at the remaining sites. We've got about 48 of these antenna sites around town to complete our antenna array that we're installing for our advanced metering infrastructure. So the map that you see here, the circles are the locations of where these seven additional monopoles will be going. The other locations that you see are part of the 48 that we have in total. Many of these have been installed on, let's say, the lighting at a high school for the stadiums. We've worked with CUSD, we've got these, these small antennas placed all over town. And this monopole or this antenna infrastructure that we're installing is part of a much bigger and I'll say more exciting project. I'm, I'm really excited about getting it out for the residents here in the, in the near future. So we also did a notification to residents within eyesight of these areas where these seven monopoles were going to go. We, we notified 315 residents by postcard. And to date, we've only received a single phone call from the residents, and they weren't really interested in the monopole, but they were really interested in, in the customer service portal that we're planning with our advanced metering infrastructure. So what these antennas do is they're, they're called gateway collectors, and they'll be picking up all of our water meter reads. We've installed, as you may know, about 87,000 new water meters that transmit on a periodic basis during the day, the read, the water value, the, the volume used. What this does for us is that allows us real-time access to that data. That comes into our utility billing, Don's Group Utility Billing. And with that, they can produce our monthly bills. And also, that data will be made available through a customer service portal that we're working on today with our IT and customer service, our utility customer service group that is going to offer to the city a, a big array of things, which will, which will be really exciting. For instance, we'll be able to, through this customer portal, it'll allow for bill payment, bill histories, start or transfer of services, usage alerts, and many, many other benefits that we're working together with utility billing and IT for. And that'll be rolled out, I'll say, in the near future. We're working really diligently, diligently on that right now. So it's part of a much bigger program. This is just seven more antennas is what you're seeing tonight. So with that, I can take any questions.
Councilmember Orlando. Thanks, Mayor. So John, are these covering businesses as well?
It'll be all of our meters, yes.
So the, I have to, I guess, just to clarify a couple things. This is a great project. I know we've been working on this for several years now, and we're finally coming to the endgame. And that's, the, the question I have is, this is, what if I have a water leak? If I'm not on the customer service portal, how am I, how would I know about that?
Through the mayor, councilmember Orlando, there will be the ability to sign up for alerts. So if you are a person that wants to see those alerts, you sign up for that, and then you will be pinged either through email or texting, I imagine, so that it will alert you. It'd be a push, a push notification that says, hey, you're using more than you're supposed to. And I think all those parameters will be, you'll be able to dial in those. We just had a great presentation here just the other day on this, so I'm kind of learning.
So the savings is not so much in people power, because I think you said you're converting the meter readers to something else?
Currently, councilmember Orlando, we have a pretty lean metering group today. And there, there was, when these programs were first introduced in cities, they talked about how, oh, it's going to reduce your meter, meter reading staff. The cities that have rolled this out really haven't found that to be the case, because you're, what the meter readers begin to become are more IT folks out in the field replacing batteries, working on the meters and things. So what they do on a daily basis may change, but the, the staffing levels probably won't decrease in the meter reading groups. So there's really not a saving from that perspective. But what we're really hoping for is that water conservation. For instance, you know, if you're out of town and you get a, you get a message that you've got a, you've got a leak, you know, you can call your neighbor or your friend to come over and, and, you know, take a look and get it shut down so that, one, you don't see that on your bill next month, and, two, you're not wasting that water. So that's really the, the great benefit of, of this program.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, John.
Thanks.
Any additional questions? John, don't go anywhere, you're next, too. John, I'm excited about this for a long time, and I've got a friend, not in our city, but left and had a major irrigation break that it was in the tens of thousands before he got back. So it was, his acre had turned into a swimming pool. So this is really exciting for our residents. Next, we have item number 30, SRP Landscape Water Efficiency Program. Called in by Vice Mayor and Councilmember Ellis, brief briefing and estimated cost savings. Oh, hi, Simone.
I'd like to introduce Simone Jolzrud, a water resource manager, and she will address this.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you all a program that I'm really excited about. Our water conservation staff has been working hard on this program for over a year, and we're really pleased about this partnership with SRP. Chandler works with SRP as a close partner in lots of ways, but this is just one more step in, in the exciting ways that we're working to be the most sustainable and water-efficient city in Arizona. So this particular program is a five-year program, which we will partner with SRP for funding to help us make our parks' irrigation more efficient. So it's, it's a landscape water efficiency assessment program. See if I got all the words in there. But it's really a two-step program. So the first step is that SRP will fund 100% the cost of a professional irrigation consultant to come and do an assessment on each park. So the goal is that we would like to get through 15 parks each year. So through the five-year program, we would be able to complete all of our parks in Chandler. And with that assessment, that would be written up in a report from a professional consultant, we would then follow up with the, the irrigation improvements, either repairs or system upgrades that are recommended in that report. So the second step of the funding would then be, we have a 50% cost share or a 50% matching program where SRP would cover half of the cost for those improvements at that site, and then the city would cover the other half just through our normal irrigation repair budget, through the Parks Department budget. So the, the benefit of this program obviously is the water savings. I mean, that's, that's the big focus for the water conservation team, is to make sure that we are not wasting water in our parks. I see this as just one small step in a much larger program to make sure that as we prepare for reductions to our water supplies in the future, we all look at the headlines that say, we know we're facing Colorado River reductions. We might even have reductions in the SRP system soon. We need to make sure that we're using water efficiently. We can't have any leaks in our irrigation system. And we really want to set the example for our residents by making sure that all of our city-owned irrigation infrastructure is as efficient as possible. So it's really important every once in a while to try to, to go through and do a full assessment of all of our irrigation systems and make sure that they're as efficient as possible. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor, then councilmember Orlando.
Thank you, Mayor. You answered pretty much every question that I had, so really well, thank you. I wanted to also highlight this because to show the public and, and the private partnership, how does that work? When it comes to us being out there saying, okay, we want water conservation, but the people that are really at the top of the chin are looking down at us and say, hey, I want to partner with you as a city, and I would like to help you not only with funds, but be hands-on to help you conserve water. So kudos to SRP for being a great partner to us with this project, and also kudos to you and your team for having really dreamed about it. And I see the vision, I see where we're going. Lastly, let me, you, you probably brushed onto that. We have, what, 67 parks here in Chandler?
70.
70 at this time. So you're saying 15 a year, so which mean that all, the money will last us all this time? It's a five years, I know you counted it. I know you know the dollars and cents already, but I want to make sure that they are going to stick with us till the end of the project and then still continue with the second part of the project.
Thank you. Through, through the mayor, Vice Mayor Ellis, you, you did the math correctly. We, we did, we did ask for an agreement that gives us up to 15 sites per year. We're going to try really hard to take advantage of every single dollar of funding that SRP has offered us. And so hopefully, we'll get through all 15 sites every single year, and we won't get behind on that. If we manage to accomplish that, which I, which that is our goal, and I, and I think we can do it, once we get to the fifth year, we will have gotten through all of our parks. And so there are some other city-owned properties, stormwater retention basins, medians, those sorts of things that have some fairly large landscape irrigation. And so if we have some extra sites left over in that, in that fifth year of the program, we would look at doing an evaluation of some of those sites as well.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Orlando. Thanks, Vice Mayor, thanks, Mayor. So the only question I had for you is, it wasn't clear. As we do the first 15 parks, will we be repairing those 15 parks as we look at the next 15? I don't, that wasn't clear. It was a two-part program, but I'm assuming it was concurrent.
Through the mayor, councilmember Orlando, yes, that is certainly our goal, is that as, as we go through and do these, we tend to call them irrigation audits, or the more proper term would be a water efficiency assessment. Certainly, our intention is that as we go through each of these audits, we would then follow up with this. It's a different team that's going to do the repairs or do whatever system upgrades are needed. That's going to, you know, that's going to be a separate process. I would imagine that as we're starting to work on the improvements to one site, that we're continuing to move on with audits at the next site. So there will be sort of a concurrent process happening.
Okay, that's, again, I heard two parts, I read two parts, and I didn't, I'm assuming it was concurrent, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for that question, I should have mentioned that. And it is, that's why it's an aggressive goal to try to get through 15 a year, because that means we're doing one, more than one a month. And that means we kind of have to be keeping on top of teeing up the next one as we're working on the last one. So we're, we're going to try really hard to get, get 15 done per year.
I know you can do it.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? All right, council, those are all of the items that were called in for review or questions. So we'll see you all on Thursday, and that concludes our study session.